Oh, thank you. Did you see it?
Uh, the rest of the papers I signed up signing in and...
Oh, my pen's on my class.
Yeah, um, I didn't know they were playing. We agreed that it was almost changing. And then, um, those are the students that didn't get into it here last week, so... Yeah, right, these four, and then some guys are all back there, so... And you might have to help me remember these folks.
By the way, Merry Christmas.
Yeah, you too. You going to the party?
Yeah. I didn't know he was...
She's too much. It's gonna be all policies.
There's gonna be a break after we swear.
Hey, Chief Tosco, you wanna come up front?
Good, okay, good.
We have a swearing in and, uh, we have a new firefighter tonight, and, uh, Chief Tosco has the floor.
It's just like a little thank you.
He didn't bring the one from Ravenna, right? Okay.
Do you want the handheld, or do you want that one?
All right.
Whatever's easier for you. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, Mr. Ruler, thank you, and especially Council, I'd like to thank you all for, uh, again, giving us time to introduce our, uh, our newest member of the Kent Fire Department, Matt Bright is his name. Matt comes us, to us from the City of Alliance Fire Department, and before that, he was on Ravenna Township, so he is a local boy, uh, currently lives with his, uh, lovely bride of five months, Lauren, in, uh, Alliance, and they are looking to move closer to the Kent area, uh, very soon. Matt is on the gray shift, uh, with Captain Myers, Lieutenant Samuels, and the rest of a, a great crew on that, on that crew, um, he's, uh, you know, Max, Max joined us with a lot of enthusiasm, um, a lot of experience already for a new guy, and we're really happy to have him here. So, uh, you know, he joins, uh, a large group of Kent firefighters who date back to 1876, who's proudly served the citizens of Kent, and I know Matt is going to uphold the traditions in the service of the Kent Fire Department. So at this time, I'd like to, uh, bring him up, bring him over, and, uh, swear the oath. As a member of the Kent Fire Department...
As a member of the Kent Fire Department.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio...
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter of the City of Kent, Ohio.
And the Charter of the City of Kent, Ohio.
I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially...
I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially...
Discharge the duties of firefighter or paramedic...
Discharge the duties of firefighter or paramedic.
Of the City of Kent.
Of the City of Kent.
I pledge to carry out the duties of firefighter or paramedic...
I pledge to carry out the duties of firefighter or paramedic.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
And will honor and respect the mission, goals, purpose...
And honor and respect the mission, goals, and purpose.
And rules of the City of Kent...
And rules of the City of Kent.
And the Kent Fire Department.
And the Kent Fire Department.
Congratulations.
Bribing him, she's bribing him already.
That sounds like crack, man, I'm telling you, you're hooking now.
It was tested on firefighter.
So, uh, Matt's wife, Lauren, will be pinning his bags this evening real quick.
Oh, great.
She's got a whole pot to her.
Congratulations.
Just like your wedding.
Thank you, everybody's coming out, the guys from the Fire Department, my family, my mom and dad, Shill and Dan over there, uh, my mother-in-law, Karen, and my brother-in-law, sister-in-law, Craig and Kayla, and their, my niece, my wife Lauren, obviously, and my brothers back there, the Ravenna guy they were talking about. I look better than him, but... I just want to say thank you guys for being the opportunity, I'm really excited to start here, I've been trying to get on this department for a while, and want to make it my career department, so I'm really excited and proud to be part of the Kent Fire Department, so thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, we're gonna get into the council meeting, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Amrin.
Here.
Mr. DeLeon.
Here.
Mr. Farrar.
Here.
Mr. Kuhar.
Here.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Here.
Ms. Schaefer.
Here.
Mr. Sedoti.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
And Ms. Wallach.
Here.
And they forgot their popcorn, sir.
Oh, 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 oh.
What's his name?
I'll be a cop here.
Hey, Matt, Matt!
Matt, Matt, you forgot your popcorn.
You forgot your popcorn.
The chief forgot.
Nah, he's the brother-in-law's gonna get it.
What's for you? What's for you, too?
Okay, we got opening remarks for Mr. Amrin.
Yeah, I would just like to wish everyone a very safe and happy holiday, um, so please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we need a roll call?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, the popcorn was sitting on the...
Yes.
Yes, we did.
All right, would somebody like to make the minutes for the regular council meeting of November fourteenth?
I move the minutes from the regular council meeting of November fourteenth.
Second.
Second by Mike, is there any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, thank you. Uh, audience communications, I must read something first. While the law does not require a council to provide time for the public to comment, we have historically invited the public to make comment, and we appreciate their input. This is the time when residents and others can comment on matters that concern them. However, we will not engage in debate, and as President of the Council, I reserve the right to end any public comments that are disruptive, embarrassing, harassing, or otherwise objectable. We ask that, when you come to the podium, you speak into the mic, that you talk clearly, give your name, your address, and limit it to three minutes.
Mr. Myers. Thank you.
My name is Christopher Myers, I live at 220 East Elm Street. I am here this evening to express my thanks to the voters of Kent who defeated your ballot issue to make it more difficult to house you from office. I am also here to let you know that two of you to come to me privately to express that they feel the clerk has personality issues. I will not name them because I do not want them to receive the same fate as I have with a police report against them. Thank you, shalom.
Thank you. Ruler?
That is it.
All right, written communications.
We have Standing Rock Cemetery Meeting Minutes of November eighth received November fifteenth, the Civil Service Agenda for November nineteenth was received November sixteenth, notification of No Planning Commission Meetings being held the month of December received November fifteenth, notification of Parks and Recreation Board Meeting on November twenty-ninth at 5:30 PM, the Parks and Recreation Board Packet for November twenty-ninth was received November twenty-eighth, the Sustainability Commission Meeting Agenda for December fourth and the Minutes of November thirteenth were received on November thirtieth, the Health Board Agenda for December eleventh Minutes and November thirteenth, and November Statistical Report received December sixth. There is also a liquor license request that we received for a stock liquor license, which means they are changing hands with stock, received December sixth for Kent ABC Holdings LLC doing business as Trino Restaurante and Patio at 152 Franklin Avenue, the first floor and basement. Chief Lee had no objections.
Move to return.
Second.
Second. Second by Mike, first by Garrett. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, thank you. Anything for Mr. Ruler?
Thank you, Mayor.
Standing Committee Reports, Legislation, Committee of the Whole, I need a, um...
I'll move the minutes of the...
The fifth, yeah.
Yeah, committee meeting minutes of December fifth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
You doing the action, too, or just the minutes?
And the action recommended.
All right, second, understand that?
Yep.
Is there any discussion on this?
Uh, could we separate the action from the minutes?
We can do that.
Okay, I'll just do the minutes.
Is that all right with the second?
Yep.
All right, is there any other discussion? All in favor of accepting the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
No abstention.
One abstention?
And now the action.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferrer, is there any discussion on the action? Seeing none, all in favor of the action, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, thank you. Uh, we had, uh, boards and commissions voting, uh, with the court, did the court give them to the, who had them?
The law director gave them to me.
Law director gave them?
Uh, yes, I can read them in, um, and then I need authorization to insert them afterward, telling you who they are.
All right, you wanna read the winners, then we'll...
Architectural Review Board is David Basista, the Board of Health is Pamela Ferguson, the Board of Zoning Appeals is Jonah Burton, Dave Mail, and Paul Selman, the Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council is Audrey Kessler and Tad Brown, Parks and Recreation Board is Neil Dukes, Planning Commission is Christopher Clevenger Morris.
Okay, I need a motion to have those accepted. Mike, you...
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to move drafts, what is that?
No, no, no.
Just to all of them?
We have to, we have to make a motion, accept these.
Except the balloting.
Yeah.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferrer, any discussion? Seeing none, all, Mr.?
Yeah, I just want to say, we had such a, a dearth of great candidates, I hope the candidates who did make their, would consider, um, applying for other positions as they open up, because I thought we had some really, really great candidates.
I tend to agree with that, so... All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, with the court read draft number twenty-eighteen-one-twenty-six entitled only?
A resolution appointing David Basista to the Architectural Review Board and declaring an emergency.
With suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
And Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Move adoption, second.
Second by Mike, is there any discussion on adoption? Seeing none, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
And Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Resolution two thousand eighteen-one-twenty-eight passes.
Okay, thank you, with the court read draft number twenty-eighteen-one-twenty-eight entitled only?
A resolution appointing Audrey Kessler and Tad Brown to the Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council and declaring an emergency.
With suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
And Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Resolution number two thousand eighteen-one-twenty-six passes.
Okay, with the court read draft number twenty-eighteen-one-twenty-eight entitled only?
Draft number two thousand eighteen-one-twenty-seven, a resolution appointing Pam Ferguson to the Board of Health and declaring an emergency.
With suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
And Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Resolution number two thousand eighteen-one-twenty-six passes.
Okay, with the court read draft number twenty-eighteen-one-twenty-seven entitled only?
Draft number two thousand eighteen-one-twenty-seven, a resolution appointing Pam Ferguson to the Board of Health and declaring an emergency.
With suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
And Mr. Farrar.
Yes. Move adoption, second.
Second by Mike, is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
And Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Resolution number two thousand eighteen-one-twenty-seven passes.
Okay, thank you, with the court read draft number twenty-eighteen-one-twenty-eight entitled only?
Draft number two thousand eighteen-one-twenty-eight, a resolution appointing Jonah Burton, Dave Mail, and Paul Selman to the Board of Zoning Appeals and declaring an emergency.
With suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
And Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Move adoption, second.
Second by Mike, is there any discussion on adoption? Seeing none, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
And Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Resolution two thousand eighteen-one-twenty-eight passes.
Okay, thank you, with the court read draft number twenty-eighteen-one-twenty-nine entitled only?
A resolution appointing Audrey Kessler and Tad Brown to the Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council and declaring an emergency.
With suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
And Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Move adoption, second.
Second by Mike, is there any discussion on adoption? Seeing none, please call the roll on adoption.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
And Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Move adoption, second.
Second by Mike, any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
And Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Move adoption, second.
Second by Mike, any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
And Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Resolution number two thousand eighteen-one-twenty-eight passes.
Thank you, with the court read draft number twenty-eighteen-one-twenty-one entitled only?
A resolution appointing Christopher Clevenger Morris to the Planning Commission and declaring an emergency.
With suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
And Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
And Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Resolution two thousand eighteen-one-twenty-one passes.
Okay, thank you, with the court read draft number twenty-eighteen-one-twenty-two entitled only?
Draft number two thousand eighteen-one-twenty-two, a resolution of the City of Kent supporting the establishment of the Cuyahoga River Water Trail as a designated water trail by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources and declaring an emergency.
With suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
And Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Resolution number two thousand eighteen-one-twenty-two passes.
Okay, thank you, that's for it, for the Committee of the Whole, Community Development.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
And Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Resolution number two thousand eighteen one thirty passes.
Okay, thank you, that's for it, for the committee of the whole community development.
Uh, move to approve the committee meetings of the December fifth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
You can't do that, he wasn't here.
Uh, Glenn, you have to do this.
Uh, move to approve the committee meeting minutes of December fifth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One abstention, do the action too.
I'd like to move to authorize the amendments to Title VII Housing Code.
Let's. Second.
Thank you.
There any discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, okay, thank you, with the court redraft number twenty eighteen one thirty-three, entitled only.
Draft number two thousand eighteen one thirty-three, an ordinance amending section thirteen sixty-five point oh three, equipment and facility requirements of the Kent Codified Ordinances Title VII Environmental Health and Housing Maintenance Code, Part thirteen Building Code, to ensure all new and existing residential rental units are required to comply with the new CO detection regulations and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amerin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
And Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amerin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Resolution number two thousand eighteen one thirty-three passes.
Okay, thank you, with the court redraft number twenty eighteen one thirty-four, entitled only.
Draft number two thousand eighteen one thirty-four, an ordinance enacting section thirteen seventy-one
point zero-two-one of the Kent Codified Ordinances titled Appeals, under Title VII Environmental Health and Housing Maintenance Code, Part thirteen Building Code, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Mike, please call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amerin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
And Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand eighteen one thirty-four passes.
Okay, thank you, with the court redraft number twenty eighteen one thirty-five, entitled only.
Draft number two thousand eighteen one thirty-five, a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to renew an agreement with the State of Ohio Development Services Agency from January first, two thousand nineteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, for the administration of a housing revolving loan fund, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
And Mr. Amerin.
Yes.
And Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
And Mr. Amerin.
Yes.
And Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
And Mr. Amerin.
Yes.
And Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand eighteen one thirty-five passes.
Okay, thank you, that's it for community development, finance committee, Mr. DeLeon. I'd like to move the committee meeting minutes of November seventh, two thousand eighteen.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I'll move the committee meeting minutes of December fifth, two thousand eighteen.
Second. Second by Roger, is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, one abstention.
Does anybody need any of these separated? I'll move all eight actions.
Second. Second by Mr. Farrar, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, with the court redraft number twenty eighteen one thirty-six, entitled only.
Draft number two thousand eighteen one thirty-six, an ordinance amending section nine thirteen point oh five of the Kent Codified Ordinances, increasing the water rates of the city of Kent, Ohio, by three percent, beginning with the first billing cycle in January, two thousand nineteen, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Kuhar.
Uh, yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amerin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
And Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Roger, any discussion on adoption?
Yeah.
Oh, Mr. Kuhar.
Uh, I'm not gonna vote for this or the next one, and, you know, we've given opportunity to increase revenues to city through water, which have been missed, we've given large increases over a short period of time to bring the water and sewer fund, you know, up to where it needs to be, and we've gotta figure something else out, just keep hammering the people with more increases every year, um, you know, there's gotta be a better solution than just keep taxing the residents, that's just all I got to say on it.
Anybody else? Please call the roll for adoption.
I have something.
What? Oh, Heidi.
Yeah, this is not a tax, this is a fee, these services are supposed to pay for themselves, people are supposed to, you know, it's a, what is it called, a utility, that is an enterprise, and cost of everything goes up, and we agreed to look at keeping track, keeping pace with the increases, rather than letting it fall behind, like previous councils might have done in the past, necessitating us, creating a giant increase, so this is basically, if you look at it, it's just keeping pace with the cost of the service.
Okay, anybody else? Please call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amerin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
And Mr. Kuhar.
No.
Ordinance number two thousand eighteen one thirty-six passes.
Okay, thank you, with the court redraft number twenty eighteen one thirty-seven, entitled only.
Draft number two thousand eighteen one thirty-seven, an ordinance amending section nine fifteen point seven-two of the Kent Codified Ordinances, increasing the sewer rates of the city of Kent, Ohio, by three percent, beginning with the first billing cycle in January, two thousand nineteen, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amerin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
And Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Adoption.
Second.
Second by Mike, please call the roll for adoption, if there's any comment, any comment, please call the roll.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amerin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
And Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand eighteen one thirty-seven passes.
Okay, thank you, with the court redraft number twenty eighteen one thirty-eight, entitled only.
Draft number two thousand eighteen one thirty-eight, a resolution requesting the county auditor to advance taxes from the proceeds of the two thousand eighteen tax year collection pursuant to section three twenty-one point three-four of the Ohio Revised Code.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Mike, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amerin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
And Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Adoption.
Second.
Second by Mike, is there any discussion on adopting this? Please call the roll on adoption.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amerin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amerin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
And Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
And Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand eighteen one thirty-one passes.
Okay, thank you, with the court redraft number twenty eighteen one thirty-nine, entitled only.
Draft number two thousand eighteen one thirty-nine, an ordinance amending ordinance number two thousand seventeen one fifty-six, the current appropriation ordinance, passed December thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, so as to adjust appropriations, transfers, and advances from the various funds of the city of Kent, to individual accounts for the current expenses of the city for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Amerin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
And Mr. Amerin.
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand eighteen one thirty-nine passes.
Okay, thank you, with the court redraft number twenty eighteen one forty, entitled only.
Draft number two thousand eighteen one forty, an ordinance allocating the number of persons who may be employed by the city for the year two thousand nineteen, with respect to each position, title, and work classification recognized by the city, designated the treatment of such positions as full or part-time positions, and designating the fund or funds from which each such position shall be paid, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Uh, yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amerin.
Yes.
And Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second. Second by Mike, any discussion on adopting? Please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amerin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
And Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand eighteen one forty passes.
Okay, thank you, with the court redraft number twenty eighteen one forty-one, entitled only.
Draft number two thousand eighteen one forty-one, an ordinance amending the general compensation plan for all unclassified and various classified employees of the city of Kent, except the city manager, from January first, two thousand eighteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty, to add a new position, full-time records clerk in the police department, under office and clerical pay classification seven, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amerin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
And Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
And Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand eighteen one forty-one passes.
Okay, thank you, with the court redraft number twenty eighteen one forty-two, entitled only.
Draft number two thousand eighteen one forty-two, an ordinance appropriating from the various funds of the city of Kent, to individual accounts for the current expenses of the city, for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amerin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
And Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Or Miss Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amerin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
And Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mike, any discussion on adopting this? Please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amerin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
And Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand eighteen one forty-two passes.
Okay, thank you, with the court redraft number twenty eighteen one forty-three, entitled only.
Draft number two thousand eighteen one forty-three, a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to enter into a loan agreement with the Ohio EPA's Division of Environmental and Financial Assistance, DEFA, for the construction of the Southwest Sanitary Sewer Pump Station Project, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amerin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
And Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mike, any discussion on adoption? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Amerin.